Here, let me have it off time for it. Thank you. Oh.
All rise, hear ye, hear ye. The Hamlin County Commission meeting is now in session. The Honorable Chris Cutshaw presiding, and please remain standing.
Thank you, Harley. Good evening, everyone. We're so glad that you've found your way here for our regularly scheduled monthly meeting this October the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. As we begin tonight, I'd like to call on my pastor, as he is Pastor DeSevero in this room, our friend, our senior pastor from First Baptist Church, Dean Hahn, if he would, please, to lead us in prayer tonight.
Before I pray, let me invite all of you Sunday evening at six o'clock to a community-wide prayer meeting that's going to be held here on the courthouse lawn as we pray for our community and for our nation. So, thank you very much. Let's pray. Father, thank you for government, and thank you for structure, thank you for the laws. You've established those things in your word that we might have a successful and well-run community. So, we're grateful for your plan, and thank you for allowing us to be a part of your plan. I pray for every man and woman on this commission, that you would bless them, strengthen them, encourage them, and give them wisdom as they lead our county. And Father, for all that have gathered here today, may our actions honor you and bless your holy name, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Doty, would you please?
We place flag, intention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Lynn. Lynn. Dan. How you doing? Are you getting along?
Madam Clerk, let's call the robe, please. Thank you. We do have a quorum, and we will get started. Welcome, everyone, once again. I'd like to ask everyone to please, if you have your cellphones out, to put those away and put them on silent, not to interrupt the meeting, and we do operate with local rules. Our local rules are printed at a sheet at the back of the room for speaking, and otherwise we use Robert's Rules of Order. If you have, if you need those, they're at the rear of the room, and we will begin. First order of business, we would like to stand, ask that All Saints School, All Saints Episcopal School, their middle school class or middle school group, if y'all would stand, please. These kids, folks, are visiting us tonight to take a look at Hammond County Government. We're grateful that you're here, and the teachers, their sponsors, their parents. Thank y'all for being here. I hope you have a great evening in watching how this works. Thank you for being here. Can you stand there and hold that while there? Okay, next order of business, it's recognition, employees' years of service. I'd like to call Commissioner Joe Huntsman to the whale, please.
I want this Mr. Joe Huntsman from the District One of our Hammond County. He is a fine gentleman, he plays a service secretary for this position. I'd like to represent him as our counterpart, he's the only certain guy we got. He's, he's, he's the man. So, a thorough presentation, gentlemen, his thanks. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Walker, would you do me the honors, please?
Thank you.
We'll now move into item two, our public comments section. Item two A, regarding non-agenda items. We have two that have signed up on our list. Number one, Ms. Ellis, you are welcome to come forward. You have, you have three minutes.
Wendy Ellis, five ninety-eight, Ripley tow. We're here to speak on the campers. In the next couple of months, y'all will be getting recommendations to keep laws and regulations the same. But if you do so and vote yes to keep the laws the same, you're not only voting out the people on that list, but you're going to have to give everybody that lives in a camper and tiny home a letter to get out. Do you know how many people that live in tiny homes and campers in the county? It's hundreds. The people in North Carolina and here in East Tennessee with the floods, they've lost everything, their homes, their cars, their loved ones, and they wish that they had a camper to put over their heads at night instead of sleeping in the cold when it's dropping down to thirties and forties degrees at night. Now, the petition that I've had, I've had over a thousand signatures. Seventy-five percent of them are local voters. If y'all don't think that seven hundred and fifty voters can change an election, you're wrong. One can. Now, I've said this from the beginning, God had put me in this fight. He told me to stand up for these people, and that's what I'll do until he tells me to stop. But I also know that he has told me, the ones that votes to kick these people out of their homes will be dealt with either here on earth or in heaven. So, y'all need to start praying and thinking about that when it's time, your time to vote to kick these people out or not. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next on our list is Ms. Marshall.
I thought maybe a compromise on your part, because so far with the planning and zoning, we're not getting a lot of compromises, just nope, this is it, we're going to do it. But what if you just grandfathered extreme cases? Like the one that Ms. Smith, the elderly gentleman, I mean, honestly, how many more years is he going to live? Why should you, you know, have to leave there? Just grandfathering extreme medical cases, like the gentleman with his mother staying in the camper, and that's the only way she would come and live with him. So, if you'll just compromise just a little, I'm sure there's a star on your crown for it, but extreme cases should, I mean, seriously, it should. And then, you know, ban all the rest, no new ones can be added, and maybe just a small handful of existing ones can stay. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. That's all we had to sign up on agenda items. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? I'm sorry, on non-agenda items, is there anyone here that would like to speak to non-agenda items? You have three minutes to do so.
Linda Noejo Stevens Road. I'd like to kind of follow up with what Chairman Cutshaw said at the beginning, talking about rules. It's been probably two years, at least, since you were going to have an index of the county rules and regulations where people would know what's going on. For example, with what these ladies have mentioned, campers, it would include that under a planning section. And I know a lot of this is on the website, county website, but sometimes it's difficult to navigate that, particularly since there isn't exactly an index that just would take you to certain things unless you know exactly how to use it. But I would like to ask that you go ahead and make the rules and make an index where you can easily find something. It could have subtopics like planning and zoning, and then it could have under that, campers, zoning, what you can do in each zone. And as I said, I know that it's other places, but it needs to be compiled altogether, like the Tennessee Code, like the Morristown City Code, and like the code of many other municipalities or counties. I think that would relieve or eliminate some of the problems we've had when the county attorney didn't know that he was being paid to attend meetings, and he was being paid to attend the meetings and then billing you for attending meetings. If there had been an index where everyone could find that, we probably wouldn't have that lawsuit. Same way with the Highway Road Commission. Some of the members are claiming, well, I didn't know we weren't supposed to get paid if we didn't attend the meetings. Most of them knew, but some are saying that. If you had an index, then people could look up the Highway Road Department and find that as well as many other things. You know, who do I call? What are the duties of the Highway Department of the Road Commission? So, why don't we get back and do what you said you were going to do two years ago when the only thing you did was pretty much was ban cellphones and, and cut the public speaking down where you couldn't sign up for five minutes? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this commission on non-agenda items?
My name is Wendellin Holden. I live at eighty-one fifty West Point Drive. I want to say tonight that I can't take money that don't belong to me, whether I know it or whether I don't know it. And if I find out that I've took money that doesn't belong to me, I should take, pay it back. And you know what? I want to thank God that Mr. Carter, before he died, paid his money back. That had to be a God thing. It had to be. And I thank God that Mr. Carter did that. And if men that are supposed to be respected and looked up to, they should do the right thing. They should pay the money back if they know they owe it. I don't care what board it is, what board you sit on, you should man up and pay the money back if you know it's not yours. And if you find out it's not yours, pay it back. You don't take money that don't belong to you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm Jack Chung, living thirty-eight hundred Bobby Court, at Gray's, Arizona State. Recently, I realized that the trash pickup have been changed, which I don't know where that. I know the hurricane has had a lot to do with that. They say I call in, they say the trash will not pick up anything housing, housing material, only pick up the wood. My concern is, what happened all this time we've been picking all the trash, like material? For instance, I had two pieces of sheet rock, and I've been told that I should put it, pick it up myself and put it to the landfill. Okay, I understand what you're doing, but that is a double-edged sword. What it means is, people don't go there, don't, don't take the trash to the landfill, they're going to throw somewhere else, at least to a neighborhood, somewhere they don't want, nobody to realize that. Guess what? County going to be a mess, all right? I, I need somebody to tell me, what is the plan going to be in the future? Don't just tell me there, say that we're not going to pick up anything else but the wood, we cannot burn it, those things. I would suggest it, schedule a time, you might pick up the wood, wood, next time, schedule to pick up the trash. Don't just say, we just don't do that. That is not fair, because we all pay the taxes here, okay? We all pay the tax. Supposed to be, everybody to equal. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission on non-agenda items?
Is that good?
Yeah, you'll need to state your name and...
Justine Jones, thirty-four, thirty-six Old Kentucky Road.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have lived in Hammond County for almost twenty years. I have recently become a homeowner here in Morristown, and where certain situations have opened my eyes, and I am appalled at just how much our local government is blatantly working against the citizens. We say no, and you push it through anyway. For example, the Taj Mahal jail. And this is coming from a group of people who are supposed to be speaking on our, the residents' behalf. Yet you think you're authorized to tell me I can't live in a camper on my property? If I am a law-abiding citizen, I pay my property taxes, which is a joke, and I keep everything safe and sanitary. What right do you have to tell me how to utilize my land, my investment? Are y'all harassing all the illegal immigrants since they are living under one single home with fifteen to twenty people, maybe more? These are not very big houses, by the way. I'm sure that's unsafe and not very sanitary, considering a typical septic tank can usually handle a household of four to six people? Are you knocking and leaving letters on their doors? Who do y'all think you are? And on to my next point, why do you think it's acceptable to restrict people that live in Hammond County? I have owned my business here for six years, and my fiancee not long ago decided he wanted to open up a business of his own. We were told only one business per residence. What? Now, I could understand if I was bringing foot traffic to my home because my land is not commercial land, but that's not the case with either of our professions. It is completely ridiculous that our government keeps overstepping boundaries, our rights as United States citizens. When was this rule adopted into our laws? The fifties? When women were, what, Suzie homemakers? Not that there's anything wrong with that, but more importantly, when did y'all start enforcing this? Because like I said, I've lived here since I was nineteen years old, and both my parents ran businesses under one address. Even I, at one point, started a business under the same roof. So, that's three separate businesses beneath one residential location. How is it justifiable that y'all get to pick and choose what laws are enforced and not enforced? Do we not live in America? Have you forgotten what your job position requirements are and who you are representing? As soon as your moral values no longer align with your constituents, then you have no purpose, and why are you here? All these questions, but will we ever get answers? Because what I've seen so far is most of y'all tap dancing around the voice of the people, and we, the people, are tired of it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Order, please. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission on non-agenda items? Seeing none, hearing none, we will now move to item two, two B, public comments regarding agenda items. First, we have on the list... It's not your turn. I go with the list first, and then I call up. Yes, you're fine. Mr. Pelligren, you have signed up for this one.
Thank you, Commissioners. Dan Pelligren, seventy-two ninety Sweetbry Drive in Talbot. Thank you. I'm going to talk about the beer permit that this, it's in your packet, I didn't print them all out. Bought this place on Henley Road and worse, well, that's where he lives at, on Reeves Chapel Road or whatever it is. Anyway, my problem is, is we did about eight, seven, eight months ago, we brought up, bought the paperwork that we brought out, we couldn't enforce. I know it was put in now on the, on the, Mr. Capps, on the zoning paper that we can't enforce, the distance. They're still issuing the same paperwork with that on there. We need to take that out, please.
Yes, sir.
Next thing, I don't like blanks left open. So, if you look on there, map number, parcel number were not filled out, so I had to do a little research to find out where it was. So, I have an issue with that also. What issue I have with it is, it was, he wants a beer permit for basically an OR one, zoning. And we just went up just several, eight months ago with the Michael's Pizza College to C one. And if you read your zoning orders, it should be C one. And I'm not against him having it, you know, his bird permit. I'm just against not being zoned. We need to be consistent with this. And if he's grandfathered in, he's only grandfathered in for the, what he's asked now. If he wants to make a change, that opens it up now. I feel he should come back, ask for a zoning change to C one, and then get the permit, and that would be okay with me. I'm not against him having it. Business is there, it's probably been there for a long time, it's also a gas station, and he's got underground tanks. I feel that we could correct this by changing it, have, have him change it right off first due to C one change, then come back with the beer permit to get this. We've got to be consistent. If you're going to allow somebody OR one to get a beer permit, somebody C one, then basically, we go all over the place. And then you also look on here, they have the zoning on here, and I never could find it where it said, it's a rural commercial thing. I can't find that nowhere in your zoning paper where that, that's included. We need to fix this before we give it to them. That's what I, I believe. Thank you.
Thanks, sir, for your comments. Now, the floor is open for anyone that would like to address this commission on agenda items. You may come forward and state your name. You have... You have three minutes.
My name is Justine Jones, thirty-four thirty-six Old Kentucky Road. If Chairman Cutshaw needs a babysitter because he can't or doesn't know how to perform as mayor, then maybe a vote should proceed. So we, the people, can decide for ourselves who we think is the best candidate for the job. After all, the United States represents democracy, meaning the government is elected by the residents. Here in this country, the citizens vote for who we want to represent us. Former Mayor Britton and you, Chairman Cutshaw, are a threat to our democracy. You should immediately resign since you.
Ma'am, you're not allowed to make threats or or point out personalities. I understand, it's 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 your tone.
Okay, because you no longer speak for the people. You no longer hold our values or our commitment to being a democratic republic. There is no position in our government where you said person should be appointed. Who died and made you king? So not only are you taking away our right to vote on our local representation, but you're also taking away our choice to not hire former Mayor Britton at forty dollars an hour to be built-in babysitter for you. It should not be the taxpayer's responsibility to employ Mr. Britton as a consultant in view of the fact that Chairman Cutshaw can't or doesn't know how to properly perform the task. I think it's fair to assume, Chairman, it's your lacking inability that leads to the reintroduction of Bill Britton into our local office, correct? I hope so. Hopefully, it's not because you crooked politicians sit your, situate yourselves into these positions of power. That way, you can lie in your own greedy pockets at the expense of us hard-working, tax-paying citizens. Some of you commissioners forget who y'all work for and who placed y'all on that high horse you've been dictating from. I'm here to remind you of just that. That we, Hamlin County residents, are still here. Our eyes are open and we are watching. And being that I have time left on this, what steps do I have to take? How many signatures on a petition is required to have this undeserving self-appointed man removed from this position? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission on agenda items?
Talk about the item in the Finance Committee meeting, our Finance Agenda, regarding refunding or reimbursing money from Road Commissioner Gail Free. I want to just show you a few little things because it seems that many of you are focusing on one document. And that's a belated, self-serving, may call it an affidavit or a statement made by Gail Free after Mayor Britton said, you gotta pay the money back because Mayor Britton thought she had moved out of the district in March of twenty-twenty-two. Now, I know why he thought that, and there was good reason to think that. There was the warranty deed from the trustee of her parents' estate conveying their house in White Pine, thirty-ninety-two Roy Messer Road, to Gail Free. You would think if she bought that house, that she probably intended to live in it. And you'd wonder why she would wait two years to move into this beautiful house. Then there was the statement or the form that she filled out for Hamlin County right at the same time in twenty-twenty-two. March of twenty-twenty-two, she fills out a change of address form, hands it in to Hamlin County. I guess you, it's the Human Relations Department. And she says, I'm changing my address and I'm changing my phone number. I'm changing my address to thirty-ninety-two Roy Messer Highway, White Pine, Jefferson County. That would make you think, hmm, wonder, why would she put that new address down if she wasn't living there? Then you have the killer. Her voter registration in Jefferson County dated February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Now, these were indicative that she, they didn't prove she lived there, but they were indicative. But when you sign a sworn statement, I being duly sworn, declare that the above address, thirty-ninety-two Roy Messer Highway, White Pine, is my legal residence. But so many of you are relying on the self-serving. Once she got billed by bill, she comes up with her affidavit that says, oh, I I lived in Hamlin County, in my road districts even, for two years after I bought that house and and after, you know, and for six or eight months, she, or six or eight months later.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission?
Mike Johncox, thirty-one twenty-one Three Springs Road. I want to go on the eleven C three-two on the funding of the Mayor Britton to help our interim mayor. I see no problem with it. I'm in an organization where people help people that have held a position before. I see it as a possible benefit to the county. We were at a committee meeting last week and I heard, you know, there's grants that he brought in for a hundred thousand for tourism, another grant, I think fifty thousand, I can't remember exactly. But I believe that expertise and, you know, passionate information on, I really believe that the county will benefit financially and to help our incoming interim mayor, if not, you know, the future, I don't know. You know, that's gotta go with the ballot box. But I I'm in a, I'm in agreement for that, for helping people fulfill the position they're they're just sitting in for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to bring their comments to this commission? May do so now.
My name is Rhonda Morgan, twenty-seven eighty-four or twenty-seven fifty-two North Coffee. I could be at Sandy's house or on my property, either one. I'm just here to make a suggestion that I think that maybe we should look a little bit deeper into this Gail Free situation. I'm pretty sure you don't have an affidavit from her friend that she supposedly, her neighbor that she lived with. And there's a reason why you don't. There's a reason why you don't have one of those.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission with public comments on agenda items? Seeing none, hearing none, we will now move into item number three on our agenda. The appointment of county mayor. Off the board, before we get that, I need, I'd like the public to understand that this appointment comes about that Mayor Britton retired September the thirtieth. It leaves the position open and there's not a viable election, the way the Election Commission works, that the next available election is twenty-twenty-six. That is why this appointment is necessary at this time. The floor is open for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate interim county mayor Chris Cutshaw, position of county mayor.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have been nominated and I'm willing to accept this position if voted. Would you please take the chair?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have, oh, thank you. We have a nomination for county mayor, Mr. Cutshaw. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed. We will vote this off the board. Yeah, we can. We are working with the new system up here, so these ladies are doing an excellent job, but they're in the learning curve.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Thomas Stoty?
Yes.
Edna Green?
No.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Fawn?
Yes.
Kim Horner?
Yes.
Bill Fussman?
Yes.
Stacey Howell?
No.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
No.
Colin Walker?
Yes.
We have a majority. Our new mayor will be Chris Cutshaw. Judge Collins, would you come up and give the oath of office? And would Mayor Cutshaw's family please join us in the whale?
Got you trapped down.
Locked you out, yeah?
Show your athletic ability, jump it up, jump over. Now they move it, Doug.
Yeah, now they move it. Remember that when he gets him in court.
You gonna hold it for me?
Yeah.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Chris Cutshaw.
I, Chris Cutshaw.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform.
That I will perform.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
To which I've been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And which I'm about to assume.
And which I am about to assume.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
Of Tennessee and the United States.
Of Tennessee and the United States.
And to faithfully perform.
And to faithfully faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
For Hamlin County, Tennessee.
Hamlin County, Tennessee.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir. I want to congratulate you, Mayor Cutshaw.
Yes.
And that will leave a opening for District Nine. And we'll be moving into that next month at a regular meeting. Move down to number four, Calendar Rules Committee, Chairman Thomas Stoty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I call the Calendar and Rules Committee meeting, per the order. We have item four A, which is the approval of the consent calendar items. And I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
He's got a second.
New to this job, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ahern. Let me jump up and wave, I suppose. Do we have any discussion? Okay, let's vote the motion. As I said, be patient, we're working with the new system up here. Okay, we're gonna have to revote that again because of technical issues. We're getting it worked out, so let's enter your vote again.
All right, we have thirteen yeas, zero noes.
Motion passes.
Item four B is our regular calendar items, but at your at your books, and we should have emails on. We have two additions that we need to vote on before we can approve the regular calendar. The first is under Finance, the eleven E, which is Resolution twenty-four thirty-one A, Resolution of the County Commission of Hamlin County, Tennessee, accepting a historic development grant from the state of Tennessee to help fund the repair of the courthouse portico. This grant would say it's been awarded the half a million dollars to help us repair this.
We have a motion.
Motion that we approve this to add.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. We got a second, Mr. Walker? Does anybody have any questions on this? I know this is new. Yes, Mr. Neesmith.
Are we just asking for this grant or we already got it? Or they gonna give it to us?
My understanding, it's already been awarded, but.
It's been awarded.
Kind of mayor.
So it's a done deal?
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
But keep in mind, that's five hundred thousand dollars, a lot of money. We don't have any idea right now what it will cost to redo all that. But it's, we're on the historic registry, the courthouse is.
on the historic registry, the courthouse is. So it's something that we're mandated to take care of.
Chairman?
Yes.
It's not a matching grant, correct?
Not, not as such, okay? I mean, we don't, if it costs $600,000, then we will have to have, we will have to meet it with $100,000. Okay, Mr. Mayor, can you touch on that?
Yes, just to clarify, that is a 50-50 matching grant. So whatever the cost is, we have $500,000 available from this grant that we have been awarded, that it is a 50-50 match. What we use of that, we match. And again, it is on the historical registry. We are, by that notion, we are commended, or we are commanded to keep up certain criteria. It's in your packet, if you'll read the back page in Part 2. What we're voting on today is only the guidelines to accept, and if, when the bid comes back and then the commission decides that they don't want to move forward with that, that's another day. But today is that we accept the guidelines, and we will not know the cost of this until it's bid out and have the full, full cost.
One more question, please, sir.
Yes.
But the way I understand it, if we accept it, and we go for the whole $500,000, we have to match, or let me change that, Hamlin County citizens have to match that $500,000.
Yes, ma'am. We have to replace the portico or rebuild it. And as structural engineer, if you'll read your packet there, it says that it is irreplaceable. I mean, it is not repairable. It has to be replaced.
Dear God, with a jail on top of it.
And as he said, there are some repercussions. I mean, we're mandated to do this, so we've got to get started on it. It's been a necessary object for a while now. Anything else? All right, let's vote the motion.
I don't have it.
Debbie Ahearn?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Edna Green?
No.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy Howell?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Okay, that's 12 yeas, 0 yeas.
Motion passes.
Then, under Public Services, we have Item 12B, which is a certificate of authority from Morristown Hamlin EMS, and I put that in the form of a motion that we add that to our regular calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Mr. Long, thank you. Any questions on this? Any discussion? Okay, off the board, we'll vote the motion.
Debbie Ahearn?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy Howell?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
And then, Miss 13.
Motion passes.
Now that we have our regular calendar updated, as to the additions, I move that we approve the regular calendar items with the addition of 11E and 12B. Put that in form of a motion.
Yep. Okay, we have a second. Who was the second? Okay, Mr. Harville, thank you. Any discussion on this? All right, let's vote the motion. Motion passes.
All ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Doty. We had no items removed from the consent calendar. Move down to Item 6, Approval of Consent Calendar.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mr. Doty. Do we have a second? Tim Horner, thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? We'll vote the motion.
13 yeas, 0 yeas.
Motion passes. Move down to Item 6, excuse me, Item 7. We will recess as the Hamlin County Legislative Body and convene as the Hamlin County Beer Board for a beer permit for Mr. Patel, Reeds Chapel 02, Inc., 2875, Reeds Chapel Road, Morristown, Tennessee, 37813. We have a motion.
I think this is just for discussion.
Discussion. All right, we'll do that one if I can. Yes.
You know, like Mr. Pelican said, can we give a beer permit to something that is actually zoned as R1? Do we have that legal authority? I don't think we do, even though it's classified as commercial, it's still zoned as an R1 according to the paperwork we have.
Anyone else? Is there anyone here from Planning that could answer that question, what they mean by R1 classified as commercial?
I'm on planning commission, but that's, I don't know every aspect of that zoning regulation.
I'm not talking about planning commission, I mean from planning, from.
But, you know, first off, I've heard of it. I've never heard of us giving one to a R1 designation.
Kind of brought it up more ago.
Yeah.
We have a residential. We can ask our extended attorney.
Mr. Capps?
I'm not aware of a commercial, typically don't have commercial business in R1 period, and I don't have an answer to the question. Maybe it's been taken up instead to see, maybe it's going to delay it, unfortunately.
I'm leaning that way. I mean, that sounds too much like selling beer out of your basement.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Make a motion, we table it next month.
Yes, we got a motion to table.
Second.
Second, Mr. Long?
We need to go into Number 8 before we do that. Sorry, definitely need to go into the vote before we do that, close the discussion and point to 8.
That's the initial discussion.
Before we take.
Yeah, this is just discussion.
Yeah.
So when we go to the committee?
Yeah. If we go to that. Anybody else have any, any comments? Any questions? We have a motion on the table to delay, to table this. We have a motion and a second.
We adjourn as the commission, we can't vote on anything. You have to reconvene as the commission.
Well, we will adjourn as the Hamlin County Beer Board and reconvene as the Hamlin County Legislative Body, considering beer permit for Mr. Patel at Reeds Chapel 02 Incorporated, 2875, Reeds Chapel Road, Morristown, Tennessee, 37813. We have the motion.
Mr. Horner?
Yes.
We have a second from Mr. Long to table this until we can get a clarification from Planning on the residential. You know, I don't, I've never heard that before, no one here seems to have an answer to that, so let's move that along and we'll, we'll vote on that. But right now, on the floor, we have the motion and the second to table this beer permit till a later date. Let's take a vote.
Debbie Ahearn?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy Howell?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
And then?
Yes, sir, please. I reminded that there had been a beer permit at this location before, and that that may be an issue that we still need to look at, because it may make it a situation where we must continue to do.
Do you know how long?
I don't know.
And what circumstances have changed?
It probably went six months without there having been a beer permit there, and therefore finally had to start process. But that's, that's just something I want everybody to be aware of.
Thank you, Mr. Capps. We'll take that in consideration, we'll look into this. I mean, it could be one of those deals where the beer permit ran out and the neighborhood grew up around it.
Mr. Chairman, I believe there could be a change order there. That could be change order issue, or the change order could be the permit, beer permit would be gone. Is this possible?
That's what we're going to look into.
That's my sense.
Thank you. I will move on down to Item 9. That was 9.
That was 9.
I think we had an amended motion.
I will now vote on the beer permit with the amendment. Still need a motion?
Oh, she went back to the, she went on to the resolution, huh?
Yeah.
I said, I thought we voted to table this.
You have 10.
Yeah, we voted to table this so we can move on.
We table it. We table it. Move on.
So we don't need to vote on the permit right now?
I think if we, under Robert's rules, we can have a motion investigated. Move, we refer the matter to committee.
I think it's our best, best, best move at this point.
Most definite.
Yeah. I don't have any idea what that other means, so we'll find that out.
Heard of it before.
Never heard it, no, I haven't either, no. So move down to Item 9. We'll recess as the Hamlin County Legislative Body and open the public hearing for Resolution 2429, which is a resolution to amend zoning map of Hamlin County, Tennessee, by rezoning District 04, tax map 0130, Group A, parcel 02400-8021, John Henry Road, Whitesburg, Tennessee, 37891, from C1 to A1. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we'll recess as a, I mean, out of that, and close the public hearing and reconvene as the Hamlin County Legislative Body and consider the Resolution 29, excuse me, 2429, a resolution to amend zoning map of Hamlin County, Tennessee, by rezoning District 04, tax map 0130, Group A, parcel 024.00-8021, John Henry Road, Whitesburg, Tennessee, 37891, from C1 to A1.
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion from Mr. Doty?
Second.
Second from Mr. Long.
Yes, sir.
Tap the tablet, Mr. Long, for your second.
It wasn't on the screen, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Neesmith?
Does anybody know why he's wanting to take it out of commercial, put it in A1, what his plans are? Is he planning on going to a single wide mobile home, or what's he going to do?
Yes.
Chairman?
Go ahead, Thomas.
Go ahead.
Yes, he has done it, the property beside of it, he's putting a modular home in there, and it's, it's really cleaning the place up.
So he's going with a modular home?
A1. You can do it, A1.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay, let's vote the motion.
13 yeas, 0 yeas.
Motion passes. Item 11, Finance Committee. Mr. Thomas Doty, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move forward here. Item 11A is an inter-local cooperative agreement for vegetative debris disposal. I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? Mr. Horner, any discussion? All right, let's vote the motion.
13 yeas, 0 yeas.
Motion passes.
Item 11B is a reimbursement from Road Commissioner from Districts 3 and 4 for $2,583.60. I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion? We have a second, Mr. Walker, any discussion?
Mr. Hudson? I'd like to make an amendment to the motion. First off, I think that the county made a mistake by not catching that before they did. And we're not talking about law money, but you know what? If you had your money taken away from, and you had it, and then you had to put it back in there, if you didn't have the money put back, that caused a problem. And I personally, that person, I have a forgiveness of my heart about things like that, and I think we did make a mistake. I agree with you all of that, but I think it's time to maybe put it behind us and correct it and don't let that happen again. But we have learned what we had done there, but I think it'd be hard to go back and try to collect the money from people that don't have the money to pay back. I, I still, it's a more problem than it's worth if we keep going with that thing. We'll make a lawsuit, but my amendment is to just put it behind us right now and go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Ms. Green?
Yes, I'd like to bring up first, if you don't care if I set, start with Mr. Harville, go around, give Mr. Harville one of those plates. I'd like to ask our county attorney, Fire Spence, we have him present.
Mr. Capps?
You don't care, would you?
I'm not going to be able to respond to any questions that relate to this litigation in this file, okay?
Well, honey, this is, this is about the one at hand with the road commission, darling.
That's what the lawsuit is about.
Now, this is about Ms. Free, darling.
Okay, Ms. Free is, now, Ms. Free is in this lawsuit.
Well, I can't help that. I just need clarification on how, if you would, please, sir, Spence, you are the attorney.
Go ahead and ask your question, and I'll tell you.
Okay, if you would take the sheet that I passed over, give this to Mr. Capps so he can understand what I'm asking him about, please. There's one. My question to you is, when I look at the private act, and I highlighted yours to make it easy.
Oh, thank you so much.
You must welcome, darling. I figured you might be like me, you had bifocals. If I read that correctly, it says only paid upon attending. Am I reading it correctly?
Did you see attending defined anywhere in the act?
I, I, what does the act?
Is that a question?
What does the private act say?
It says they shall be paid upon attendance.
That's right.
And is this, is, why are you asking this question?
Well, I want clarification to make sure that I'm.
The statute speaks for itself.
Okay, would you clarify it for all of us, please? So, Ms., the way I understood the bill that was sent, Ms. Free did not attend. Now, in all fairness, she's not the only one that has not attended. You've still got several others that have not met their burden of paying. That is county citizens' money. The act says what it says, it means what it says. I didn't pass the private act, the legislature did. But we need to have that paid back. And in all fairness, the law states that upon attending, you will be paid. And in his letter, to, in the mayor's letter, to Mr. Bear Withman? And in his letter to, in the mayor's letter to Mr. Bear With Me a minute, and the mayor's letter to Mr. Charles. I've got it. Give me just a minute, Mr. Bobby, please, sir. Mayor sent a letter out to the effect that the county attorney owed the road department to take care of it, but the private act states exactly what it is, and it needs to be paid back. She should have done without, without her, matter of fact, not just her, my understanding, there were seven commissioners there. And they all come up owing. That is my understanding.
Okay, let's, uh, let's look at it this way. We, uh, we have a law in Hamlin County about not residing in campers full-time. And we've had several citizens come forward with different ideas, one being that we grandfather that in and move forward. Okay, Mr. Neesmith had a rational idea of grandfathering that in and moving forward. So that's, you know, we're gonna pick who we want to take care of and who we don't.
Mr. Huntsman.
Mr. Neesmith.
We've, uh, I asked the last meeting that we get the proper paperwork to the road commissioner so that the people that writes the checks won't be left hanging out there paying a bill. Other words, make sure they're right when they send that in to us. And if they're not there, she won't give them a check if the paperwork says that. That's something we hadn't done for thirty-five years. I think it's time to clean it up with this act. Making sure that, that a man of people know about it and not, not just pay them. I don't know how they do it. I don't know how they just, they don't get a time sheet or, or nothing. I don't know how they pay it.
They're a totally separate entity from us. They run things. I have no, no idea. Okay, Mr. Doty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got two, two things here. First off, the, um, the motion was only to approve what the road department and the road commissioners had voted on and sent us. Secondly, the Hamlin County road commissioners are elected officials. I do not think that we as a Hamlin County commission are the governing body over other elected officials. I don't think we have the authority to tell other elected officials on things like this. Can we recommend it to other places? Yes. They have their own body, their own. I do not think that we are their keepers or their governing body. I know that people want to throw up planning. Planning is one hundred percent appointed. They are not elected. Every person on the Hamlin County Road Department, or the, excuse me, the road commission, all the road commissioners are elected by popular vote inside the county. I don't think we have authority to supersede what they choose. They basically sent us this for courtesy, saying this is gonna be coming back to our, back into our bank accounts. Is my, my point of view on it.
Thank you, Mr. Doty. Thank you. Anyone else?
Chairman.
Ms. Green?
They may be elected, but Hamlin County citizens pay that. And the law says upon attending. If you fail to attend, you don't take the money. And anybody that took the money and note ahead of time that it was upon attending, and you have two that stated they noted all about it, I was there, they need to pay it back.
So you should.
That's right and wrong's wrong, if it's mayor or anyone else.
So you suggest we follow the letter of the law?
I, I, I think there, we have no other choice. It, the laws are there for a reason. It's just like the private act as far as the attorney. It is all a matter of legal. And as, as our attorney has already said, it states upon attended. I didn't make it up.
No, I understand that, but remember, this, this cuts more than one way.
But I'll take it one step further, if we had had the index.
Well, that's.
But it was, I know, but if, if we'd had it, it would have been where people could have accessed it and pulled it without any trouble.
Okay, we have a motion.
Ms. Al.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Al?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'd kinda like to thread the line here and, um, if, if, if money is owed and an invoice is sent, then I look at it as the ball is on that side of the net. And they, they have to put their head on that pillow like anybody else. And if, um, if you have an invoice there, then that person has to deal with it and, um, I don't understand why it's just one, but, if others missed, then, um, and then I'd, I'd kinda like to go with Commissioner Huntsman. Let's, let's do move on and, um, get the invoices out there and, and it's, it's on their side of the net is the way I look at it. And for the individuals to address it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Al. Anyone?
Chairman, Hon.
Oh, Mr. Long.
I'd like to remind this commission, I think Ms. Green's out of order. This invoice is only for one road commissioner. This has nothing to do with the other road commissioners. This invoice is for one commissioner only, and that's what we're looking at. Now, we're not looking at any other road commissioners. So if you look in your package, that's the invoice they sent us, from Ms. Free only. It's what they approved in their meeting. And we approved this in the committee and sent it forward, but it is only for one road commissioner.
Yes, sir.
I'd also like to point out that the road commission has resolved their issue with, with payment. They have a signing sheet that they will now sign and bring back and send to the, um, finance director for approval. Okay, well, well, we're not approving, we're just sending out by their signing sheet. So that has been addressed.
Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Hon, may I clarify? There were other invoices sent. It was not just this invoice, sir. Everyone was invoiced that came up that had missed meetings, sir. Just for clarification, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion before us. It's basically from Mr. Huntsman, basically, and we've done this with the road department, you know, we did it with, uh, even with, uh, we did it with the road department and their employees leaving early. We just said, okay, we can't do that. We're gonna put a stop to it. That's essentially what we've got here with Mr. Huntsman. His suggestion is we grandfather it in, we take much better record-keeping, and we move on. That's the motion. We have a motion from Mr. Huntsman. Do we have a second?
It's on there, Mr. Walker.
Oh, Kyle Walker. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Well, that's just the amendment.
Mr. Huntsman, could you restate your amendment again, please?
I'd like to add to the, just to make an amendment to it, uh, to go forward and just through goodwill, just tell them that we're not gonna worry about it. We're gonna go forward and do it correctly from now on. Mistake that we made, admit the fact we made a mistake, and, uh, but we're not gonna go after it. We're going forward. You're on out.
Thank you, Mr. Huntsman. Did you get that okay? All right, so we have a motion. We have a second. We'll have to mose. We're, we're trying to get the, get the computer here. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Mr. Richardson?
Mr. Richardson is looking at me like I'm supposed to say something, and I, and I will.
He looked like he was gonna say something.
There has been a lawsuit filed here to, of course, we, so how that affects your also, but I'm not gonna present a no or tell you what to do with it.
At this point, we'll, we'll move forward and. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have it. Oh, there it is, Mr. Walker. I'm sorry.
You know, I kinda agree with Peggy. This is on, on them. It's not on the county to enforce this. If we've sent her invoice, if she wants to pay the invoice, that's on her. I don't think we need to, you know, we're gonna spend more money trying to enforce her to do it through attorney fees than what we're gonna gain. What, what is, we're spending good money of the county's and the taxpayers' money to go after the same amount of dollars. Does that make any sense? I, I mean, that's like you buying a fifty cent coupon to get fifty cents off of something. What's, you're not gaining anything from it. So, I mean, that's where we're at. If they wanna pay it back, that's on their conscience. It's not on the county's conscience. We just need to move on. We got caught with our pants down. Now we've learned from this forward on, we deal with it the way we've dealt with it. And we have to enforce it from this period on. That's just my opinion of it.
And your opinion, babe. We appreciate that. Thank you very much. Are we ready? Mr. Neesmith?
On, on Joe's amendment, Joe, you're saying let, uh, begones be begones? That's what you're saying?
And correct now on, we're gonna do it right.
Okay. What about the ones that's paid it back?
Well, they're willing to do it, sure.
What about the invoice we got on the one woman that hadn't paid it yet? Will you do that?
If they will pay it back, I say pay it back. That's just what they're gonna do.
What about the invoice that hadn't, against this lady?
We're not gonna charge for it. We're not going after it.
You're what?
We're not going after it, the invoice. We're not going after it. If we, if we vote that, then we're, we're gonna put it behind us.
Yeah, we're gonna vote on this. It's on the agenda.
Yeah, we're gonna vote on it.
Yeah, we're gonna vote on it.
In all clarification.
See what happens, I don't know.
Mr. Long?
Mr. Chairman, I, this is my honest belief. I do not think we can vote on this. There's a lawsuit in place. I would think you would have to table this and let it run the course through the courts. I don't think we have the authority as a commission to vote on it.
I think that'd be all right, too.
And then the court may be reversed.
Yeah, it's, it's not gonna make any difference in the final analysis. The court, suit's fine, whatever happens in that lawsuit. Whatever what y'all vote here today, I mean, it may be a moral, uh, decision if you're all opinions, but since it's a matter of, it'll work itself out, one way or the other.
Good point.
Put you to the task.
We have a motion. We have a second, so we're gonna. This is a motion to amend. We can vote that on the board now? Uh, Mr. Neesmith?
I'd like to make an amendment to Mr. Huntsman's amendment that we table this till we find out what this lawsuit's gonna do.
I'll second it.
Well, he, he will have to, he will have to remove it, um, he'll have to take his amendment. It's already on the table and seconded.
I can't hear you, Bob.
We have, we have, yes.
I'd be willing to rescind my amendment and go back to the red zone, and then you decide what we'll do. If we're gonna table, we'll table, but the red zone, we had it, we don't have to step to it.
Mr. Chairman, please ask him to speak the mics. We can't hear on this side, sir.
I, I'll tell you.
Thank you.
Um, we have now, Mr. Huntsman has rescinded his amendment. So that's off the table. We've gotten advice from our county attorney that whatever we vote on here, it's gonna play out in the courts, and that'll be the final decision. So it kinda brings us back to a moot point with the lawsuit. But it is on the agenda, and, uh, it's probably something we need to table and see what the courts decide. So we have a motion from Mr., yes.
I'll make a motion that we table it.
Got a motion from Mr. Neesmith. I need a second.
I second it.
Ms. Green's second's it. Okay, now we're gonna get this back into the minority.
We're giving that thing a workout tonight.
Okay, so we're gonna table. Is the motion to table?
Motion to table.
Uh, the reimbursement?
Uh, reimbursement from road commission districts.
Anthony, you passed your lawsuit out too quick.
It's not mine. I was accused, but it wasn't me.
All right, so they're voting on the second.
Yes.
Table, table.
Table. We're good. All right, gentlemen, we're ready. We have a motion. We have a second. To table this agenda item. Can you vote the motion?
Thirteen yeas, zero nay.
All right, motion passes.
Yeah, we amended the table.
We did, so we need to vote on the original motion now. So we'll need a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second.
We already have that. We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Huntsman and Mr. Walker. So, I think we've.
I know, because they made it, so.
But we're going back to the original.
They rescinded the first motion.
You had a motion and a second on the original.
All right, thank you, Kyle.
So we're gonna have to vote that down. Have to vote it down. We'll have to vote it down.
Vote no on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
No, no vote yes. We voted yes, but we voted to amend it to table it, so yes, we can table it. We just voted, we just voted to amend the motion.
I don't know what Robert Roy was knowing, but he's got this, it's kind of blue.
Huh? We have not.
Just wanna thank Chairman Ketchall back there.
Yes, uh, if we couldn't, County Mayor, 'cause he was our base parliamentarian there for a while, the motion, the amended motion was to table this. So that motion is to table it completely until after the lawsuit? Does that mean when we vote on the original motion, yes is to table and no is to not table?
When you table a motion, I think it reduces everything to the table and you take everything off.
Take it off, so we don't vote, we don't vote the original motion.
You do not vote the original motion. You aren't voting to table the motion, excuse me, sir. You're voting to motion, to table the motion, it takes it off of the agenda.
Thank you, sir.
For indefinite time.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're there.
So we do not have to.
Yeah, we're gonna move on, Mr. Doty.
All right, since, since how we tabled eleven B, we'll move on to eleven C, budget amendments. Eleven C one is fund one oh one, County Clerk's Office, for ten thousand dollars, and I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion? We have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote the motion. Motion passes.
Item eleven C two is fund one oh one, Circuit Court, for one thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion? We have a second. Mr. Walker, any discussion? Let's vote the motion.
Thirteen yeas, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item eleven C three, fund one oh one, County Mayor, twenty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and sixty cents, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion? We have a second. Ms. Green?
Thank you, Commissioner Hon. I agree with the lady that spoke earlier. We are going to have an enormous amount of money between this, what she calls Taj Mahal, and it's what I call it as well, and other expenses. and it's what I call it as well, and other expenses. I can't see spending this. We have had mayors in the past that went in and were fantastic at their jobs, I just don't see that. We've got very good people in Hamlin County. Mr. Dennis Fox and Ms. Amanda over there did the cream of the crop. So I don't see spending extra to bring back a consultant. I feel like Mr. Britton wanted to retire for a reason, he deserves to be left out and left alone.
Okay. You have your vote. Anyone else? And to, if you already don't know, Bill Britton offered his services, so we're not dragging him into anything, and, yeah, so. Let's vote the motion.
Eleven yeas, two nays.
Motion passes.
Item 11C 4, Fund 176, Capital Highway Projects Fund, $450,000, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Mr. Neesmith?
Is this money taken out of the wheel tax money funds?
Yes.
It is.
Any other questions? Let's vote the motion. Motion passes.
Item 11D, which is Resolution 2430, a resolution authorizing Hamlin County to commit additional funding on CDBG Project 16103 for a 2024 fire engine, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions or discussion? Let's vote the motion.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
Item 11E is Resolution 2431A, Resolution of the Hamlin County, of the County Commission of Hamlin County, Tennessee, accepting a historic development grant from the state of Tennessee to help fund the repairs of the courthouse, Portico. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any question?
I have to talk this, it will be too long.
Okay, hold on one second. Do we have any discussion on this? Any questions? It's in dire need, I think, Mr. Mayor, you said that could not be rebuilt, it had to be replaced.
That is according-
Early, early results.
According to the report that we have on their guidelines, find that verbiage here, that it, the structural engineer has recommended it be replaced and not repaired. That is correct.
Could you, while she's getting that set up, we talked earlier about the his, historical registry and what we're obligated to that?
Yes, our, our courthouse was duly registered as a historic place, April the 13th, 1973, and since that's one of the standards that you have to upkeep because you are on the national registry. Now, I, I don't know all the ins and outs of that, however, if we fail to upkeep that, we fall, we could fall off the national registry. And this whole process began, there is a $500,000 grant out there, which is a 50% match. There's going to be structural engineering done, there's got to be architecture looked at, and bid work before we know what's going to happen here. The, the building, or the portico may actually be built with modern era materials and clad with certain materials that we can keep the integrity of this sort of building. That is yet to be determined. It's all in your packet, if you take a look at that and want to read over on the back of it, there's the guidelines that we're having to adhere to, such as the columns, the railings, and the decking, that has to match the historic part that's there now. These are some federal guidelines. In other words, the Secretary of the Interior standards that we are going to have to meet to do this. That, that's part of this grant.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We have a motion, we have a second, we have no discussion, let's vote the motion.
Twelve yeas, one nays.
Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Doughty. We'll move on down to Chairman Mike Richardson of the Public Services Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 12A surplus items for county clerk, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions on this? Let's vote the motion.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 12B certificate of authority for Moorestown Hamlin EMS, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll have to add this.
Okay, go right ahead. Do we have any questions on this? You got the handout for it, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. I'll just vote the motion. Hold one second.
No, we're ready to go.
We're ready to vote.
Twelve yeas, one nays.
Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. That concludes our business for tonight. Couple of housekeeping chores here, couple of announcements. Our November committee meeting will be Tuesday, November 12th, at 5 o'clock, right here. And the commission meeting will be Thursday, November 21st, at 5 o'clock, also right here. A sou-
I want you to gavel, I'd like to say something.
We also need to keep in mind that we have a seat to fill for District 9, and we'll take that up next month. I believe Ms. Hal has something she wants to say.
Yes, sir. When do we do the vice chair?
Oh. Chairman, we're down a chairman as well.
Blew right past that. We do, yes, we do. I had it in my notes right here.
Step back and do vice chair first and then redo for chair, or for myself, I'd like to extend a vote of confidence to our vice chair and acting chair, Mr. Bobby Hahn, to fill the seat of chairman for the commission for the remainder of this term, of this year.
What, we decide no vote necessary?
Mr. Chairman, it's not necessary. Now, that, that vote of confidence, it'd just be good for-
I'll for it. Do you need to tap that in? Give us one minute. Well, that'll be item 3B.
We just don't, we're done.
What was that vote of confidence?
I haven't heard anything yet.
It was a vote of confidence to approve Bobby as our chair to finish out the year. Bobby Hahn.
Okay, let's vote the motion. Oh, wait a minute. Thomas Doughty made the motion, we got a second?
We'll have to have a second on a nomination.
Do not, thank you. All right, let's vote the motion.
Twelve yeas, zero nays.
All right, that motion passes.
One abstain, I'm sorry, one abstain.
One abstained, okay.
For item, for item 3C?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mr. Stan Harville as our vice chairman of the commission.
Okay, we have a motion for Stan Harville as vice chair?
Seven, seven.
No, we don't need a second. Do we have any other nominations? We'll close the nominations.
This machine won't go along without it.
Oh. Well, you had two.
Okay.
Mike Richardson did.
Okay, fill just somebody in here for second.
If you'll hit second, Mike, it's requiring-
Second.
On the-
Contact and the machine won't work.
Okay.
All right, let's vote this motion.
Twelve yeas, zero nays, one abstain.
Congratulations, Mr. Harville.
Thank you.
Motion passes, we have a new vice chair. We'll thank everybody.
I think we got one more motion going after that. We're going to have to have somebody to fill in for the finance, your department. I make a motion to put Stan Harville.
That'll come under committee.
That's under committee, yeah.
Huh?
That's under committees. Yeah, under committees.
Yeah, the chairman will appoint that.
Chair appoints that. You going to appoint that? Get Curly here, put Curly in there. Thank you for your gall.
You are man, Neesmith.
We are, I'm, I'm working up the committees, I'll have those force by the committee meetings next month, have those finalized, you'll get an email on that in the next few days. Okay, clarify, Mr. Neesmith? Okay, we're good. Okay, appreciate everybody's hard work and your attendance. My predecessor up here would have all minds clear, so we're going to carry that tradition on. All minds clear? We stand adjourned. Makes her nervous.